First we have, uh, we have ordinances on second reading. Notice to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title, uh, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-20, Handicap Parking, Section 10-20. Schedule 39 Parking Zone for Handicap Person, at 145 Troop Avenue, 307 Howard Street, 45 Julian Street. Two, an order to adjust the rates of compensation for school crossing guards in the city of New Brunswick. Three, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule 10-12, Traffic Control Regulation, Section 10-12, 160, Schedule 18, Right Turn on Sanford Street, Red Light Prohibited, reference to Sanford Street. Four, amend the management salary ordinance, 2018 to 2020. Orders on first reading, uh, one, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 5, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapters 10-16, Stop Against Handicaps and Any Parking, Section 10-16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Ball Street.
Yes. And we-
Council President, you expect the one on the question, I had to call that one, you still-
Yes, sir. I didn't read one of that question.
That's fine.
Okay.
And we have resolution, uh, approve agenda minutes. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for D-Tax sales categories. Four, resolution, certified review, 2017 Annual Order. Five, authorized protection plan. Six, approve resolution, authorize the refund of escrow, Robert Johnson University Hospital, amount of $5,168.45. Seven, approve resolution to authorize the refund of escrow to Robert Johnson University Hospital, amount of $199.28. Eight, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract, eight, eight, one, two, nine, T, that's zero, one, six, from Atlantic Tactical Corporation for purchase of ammunition, not to exceed $16,208.40. Nine, approve resolution to refer the New Brunswick Development Plan, uh, Plan Referrals to Planning Board for Review and Recommendation. Ten, authorize the purchase of youth services system under the state contract, eighty-eight, two, two, twenty-nine, T, that's zero, two, zero, zero, six, vehicles passenger vans, a model Chevrolet Incorporated, for one, 2019 Express, two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, twenty-five-hundred passenger van, not to exceed $24,764.50. Eleven, approve request for street closing, requested by New Brunswick Police Department, uh, New Brunswick Domestic Violence Awareness Coalition, locations begin at Courtyard at Rutgers Institute of Health, walk-up Fire Street, Front Street, left on Hale Street, and, uh, left on Baldwin Street, Fire Street, finish at Courtyard, uh, Rutgers Institute of Health, for the 16th Annual Domestic Violence Awareness Bradley March, uh, date Saturday, October 27, 2017, time, 10:11 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Twelve, approve request for use of city property, requested by Merlin's Kits, location, Dugald Park, Billion and Trek, for five K run, the bulk fundraiser, rehabilitating shelter dogs to service dogs, date Saturday, October, uh, 13, 2018, time, 6:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thirteen, approve amendment of resolution, R, that's zero, four, one, eight, one, three, for request of street closing, requested by New Brunswick City Market, location of streets to be closed, George Street, New Street, Fire Street, Livingston Avenue, George Street, and so on, and all the way ending on Liberty Street, for 2018, uh, Center Oktoberfest, said that, uh, date Saturday, October 13, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Police Act of Duty. Fourteen, approve request for April holiday horse-drawn carriage ride, for 2018, requested by New Brunswick City Market, free, uh, free horse, uh, horse-drawn carriage rides through downtown New Brunswick, dates in December, uh, 14th to 15th, and the 16th, time, 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., um, 7:00 p.m., rain day, uh, dates, uh, 14th, 15th, 16th, two rides, and follow-up dates and so forth. Additional rain days, Friday, 12:21, and, uh, December 22nd, or Sunday, December 23rd, based on KB Carriage Company and available to Police Act of Duty. Fifteen, approve award to contract, uh, Southport, Southern Associates LLC, for proprietary contract for consulting services for two, for, from the Police Department, term of 12-month period, commence July 1st, 2018, and ending July, uh, June 30, 2019, not to exceed $7,680, non-proton. Sixteen, approve resolution, authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement with Middlesex County Office of Agent, Title 3C1, for congregated meals, uh, New Brunswick Senior System Grant, $10,017, approve resolution, authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement with Middlesex County Office of Agent, Title 3B, information and assistance, New Brunswick Senior System Grant, $6,018, approve request for solicitation of funds, requested by, uh, Rutgers University Habitat for Humanity Campus Chapter, dates Friday, dates in October, 15th, 6th, 7th, 11th, and 12th, time, 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., locations George Street, Mercer Avenue, and Dudley Road in Dr. Rogers Lane. Nineteen, approve request for solicitation of funds, requested by Rutgers University Dance Marathon, with dates to benefit Inbrace Kids Foundation, dates Friday and Saturday, October 12th to 14th, November 9th to 11th, December 7th to 9th, February 15th to 7th, 15th through 17th, February 22nd to 24th, March 1st to 3rd, 2019, locations, uh, location, nine a.m., not, time, excuse me, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., locations, various locations from George Street and Bishop Place, all the way up to Ryder's Lane and Dudley Road. Twenty, approve request for solicitation of funds, requested by five, fraternity, five chapter at Rutgers University, to benefit Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation, times in October, 26th, 22, uh, 2:00 p.m., 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., the 27th, uh, 8th, 8:00 a.m. to 6th, Sunday, October 28th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., locations, various locations from College Avenue, on and up to Bear Street. Twenty-one, approve, uh, approve payment for emergency purer, repair in Livingston Avenue for road victim to a water main break, the Shifano Construction Corporation, not to exceed $28,026.7, purchase order, E, that's seventeen, that's nine, nine, five. Twenty-two, approve amendment of resolution, zero, 21, eight, sixty-six, reason additional amount of $10,000, Gibraltar Transmission, for auto transmission services for the Police Department, specification number 65918P, not to exceed $25,000, approve this change order will constitute an increase of 20 percent of mortgage original contract. Twenty-three, approve authorization and rebid for emergency shelter, specification number 69518RFP. Twenty-four, approve purchase by the border utility department through, uh, bike board purchase program, for one, box land LX VMS valve maintenance truck, from Illinois to work, do, uh, doing business, that's E H, uh, W A C H S, not to exceed $163,821,058. Twenty-five, approve amendment of resolution, R, that's zero, seven, one, eight, twenty-seven, reason additional amount of $25,000 with severe, uh, structures LLC for emergency securing properties for the Division of Fire Prevention, term of 12-month period, commence in July 6, 2018, and ending July 5, 2019, specification number 67418P, not to exceed $65,000. Twenty-six, approve on, on, premise raffle at Gambino's Inn, 284 Livingston Avenue, uh, by Rutgers University Foundation, homeless and indigent population, health outreach, promise clinic endowment at Rutgers Robert Johnson Medical School, date, uh, November 16, 2018. Twenty-seven, approve all premise raffle merchandise at Raritan Valley Work Center, nine-Tunnel Road, for Easter Seals, New Jersey, uh, date, uh, December 7, 2018. Twenty-eight, approve relaxation of noise orders, requested by Gilbane, uh, building company, reason for complete, uh, remaining utility work at 90 New Street, date Saturday, September 22, 2018, non-proton. Twenty-nine, approve relaxation of noise orders, road closure, requested by Gilbane, uh, building company, reason for mobilization of a tower crane at 90 New Street for the standard, uh, for the standard at New Brunswick Project, New Street between Livingston Avenue and George Street, date Saturday and Sunday, November 3rd and 4th, alternate dates, dates in October 27th and 28th, Saturday, November 24th and 25th, 2018, 18, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thirty-one, approve amendment of resolution, with Joe May Contracting Corporation, 2015 Senator Service Rules, Project Phase 2A, specification, amount, credit, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent of mortgage original contract. Thirty-two, approve relaxation of noise orders, requested by Whitman Corporation, reason for perform environmental investigation at 96, uh, to 100 Bear Street, uh, Saturday, Saturday, October 13th, alternate date, uh, October 20, 2018, hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thirty-three, approve relaxation of streets, city noise orders and road closure, requested by Fire Street Associates, reason for complete interior repairs at 104 Street, 104 Bear Street, street closing, George Cameron Avenue between New Street and Fire Street, uh, date Saturday, October 6th and 7th, alternate date, October 13th to 14th, hours, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thirty-four, approve release of site performance line, record, letter, credit, uh, number, H O G, worth 357, amount of $324,758, for Matrix, at New and Liberty Streets, block number 117, 01, Block 3. Thirty-five, authorize the Mayor and City Club to excellent community agreement with Middlesex County Hazards and Material Recovery Program. Thirty-six, authorize execution of access agreement with Rutgers, uh, State, uh, Rutgers State University Installation, three surface elevation tables, along, uh, New Brunswick River Conservation Area. Thirty-seven, approve ABC license, oh, hold that request. Uh, thirty-eight, approve payment for emergency procurement of border utility, prepare a 2020 storm sewer on Handy Street, the NEG Contractors Corporation, not to exceed $14,730, purchase order, uh, number E 18777. Thirty-nine, approve amendment of resolution, R, that's zero, seven, one, eight, two, six, change order number two, world construction, for removal and disposal of standard decals of two NFC fitness courts, as planned to throw two customer decals, specification number 91718RFP, amount of $2,900, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent of mortgage original contract. Forty, approve organization advertise, furnish, and deliver one fire compass, with specification number 72518P. Forty-one, approve request for street closing, requested by American Cancer Society, landing lane for beta strikes against breast cancer, law, uh, Sunday, October 21st, 2018, 9:30 a.m. to 5, 11:30 a.m. Forty-two, authorized application and execution of joint agreement, for the 2019 Transportation Trust Fund, New Jersey Department of Transportation, with George Cameron Avenue roadway improvements on the Red Street to 12th Street, project ID number MA 2019, George Cameron Avenue, zero, zero, six, four, four, forty-three, approve, I've authorized application and execution of grant agreement, 2019 Trust Fund Program, with New Jersey Department of Transportation for Handy Street roadway improvements from French Street to Mercer Avenue, project ID, MA 2019, Handy Street, zero, zero, six, five, zero, so on and so forth, then we have public discussion, and thanks to remember. Do you have anything else? All right. All right. Meeting will now talk on the order, your clerk, please do as the others call on the roll.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been applied and satisfied, the add-on notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper in the city of New Brunswick, namely, The Home News Tribune. Can we please stand, please?
My pleasure, we announce the reply of the United States of America, and as a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Will please remain standing in the moment of silence for those that have given their life in defense of freedom around the world, and those that have lost their life unjustly, and those especially across the world, in Indonesia, other places that experienced natural disasters. Approve of minutes, motion to accept the minutes, from 16th to 15th.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Now we have to go to, uh, courts, uh, do we have any correspondences from the clerk?
Yes.
Please wait a minute.
Item one, a letter from the city of New Brunswick to provide written notification of the Green Acres Public Hearing on Thursday, October 25th, 2018. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we have no public hearings, and ordinance, okay, we'll have, uh, we'll go to ordinance on second reading. Uh, number one, an ordinance for amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-20, Handicap Parking for Section 10-20, that's, that's zero, one, zero, Schedule 39 Parking Zone for Handicap Person, at 145 Troop Avenue, 307 Howard Street, 45 Julian Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. And we have two, an order to adjust the rates of compensation for school crossing guards in the city of New Brunswick. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore, 333 Summersett Street. I would like to say thank you for the raise, that I was taught to appreciate what you get, but I'm still asking you to raise, to raise this to $15, due to where I am still seeing low crossing guards, due to where, within the past couple of days, not really telling anyone out, but due to where you had crossing guards that were out, and they were not covered, on certain streets where you had to have one crossing guard rush from one area to get to another, so please, I'm still asking you, please raise it so you can get some, maybe some younger ones out, because like I said before, majority of them with that low rate, you're just getting people who's retired, and who's on disability, and, and, and what, you're on disability for a reason, because you cannot stay at work the whole time, and I know plenty of the crossing guards that are that way, not to say any names, like I said, I thank you for the little raise, but I hope you will attend to raise it to $15 to get some people, some younger ones or so, out, out there, so it won't be so much, due to where a crossing guard not being on the street, and then the Police Department say, okay, they have no one to cover for the streets, and like I said, due to where, yes, I, I would take the time, if I do see that, I, I would help out, but like I said, due to where, sure, I would love the job, but like I said, what, I know what it's like being on disability, the main ones that you're hiring, is what, what, one moment you can feel good, one moment you can be, what, ill, and like I said, due to where seeing the past couple of days, with crossing guards being off of their corners, like I said, I hope you will still think about, for the safety of our children, to raise it to $15, please.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Charles Cradaville, I'm resident of New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today, and candidate for mayor of New Brunswick. I have a couple of questions to start, but first I do want to second everything that Ms. Moore just told you, I couldn't agree more with her, and I applaud her for taking the lead on pushing this, uh, issue forward. Um, first question is, what is the total cost to the city approximately for passing this ordinance?
I calculated it to be about $11,000 for the year 2018.
Okay, and of course, the city budget, though-
The difference, I, it's all a function of how many hours are actually worked, but that was mine.
Right, and, uh, the, uh, what about the, the rest of the school year, right, the, uh, this will be in effect for, uh-
Should be in effect for, um, all of the 2019 school year, I believe, unless the council chooses to do something else with the ordinance, but-
So we'd be talking more like 60, 70,000, 80,000?
I would take, um, I would take the 11 that I suggested and multiply that probably by six full months of, six and a half months of, uh, there's a bunch of breaks and holidays mixed in there, but, so we had to multiply it by five.
So maybe 50 or 60,000 dollars. And, uh, um, where is the money coming from?
2018 money?
Yes.
It will come out of, um, the resources we have available to us, uh, 2019 will be a function of the 2019 budget.
So I'm starting to clear-
And of course, we, as we have discussed a few times, and agreed in place with the board of ed, where they do, we in fact reimburse us for, um, uh, the costs of, uh, uh, the school guard compensation to us, and, um, I've not had a discussion with the mayor on whether he intends to, uh, seek a, uh, reimbursement on this additional money in 2018 from the board, might sense that he's not likely to do that, but that's, that's what's wrong, I understand that conversation.
Okay, that's where I was going with that. So thank you for answering my questions, uh, I do just want to say, um, you know, very briefly, I think that the crossing guards have an important and dangerous job, I've had the pleasure of getting to know some of them recently, and see them in action, and they do more than just, uh, you know, hold up a stop sign and, uh, you know, wave people through, they greet people to start their day, they really, uh, really, uh, a lot of them are very passionate about their work, and take it very seriously, and I, I'm, uh, I think that working people are what makes our city great, so, um, glad that you've decided to give these working people a raise, um, I wish that the increase was, uh, larger, like the, uh, you know, $2.50 that Danielle and myself have been pushing for, um, but I do, uh, appreciate that you, you know, taken a, taken a, an interest in, uh, investing in these, these folks, uh, one of whom has been crossing kids for 21 years, uh, and so, uh, these are great people, and, you know, if elected, my highest priority is going to make sure our city government runs smoothly, and for that to happen, all city employees must earn a living wage, so, uh, you know, our state's an expensive one to live in, our city is no exception to that, so, uh, I will certainly do all I can to advance the cause of working people, not just those who work for the city, but all working people, so, uh, thank you for this. Yes, sir?
That's pre-campaign time, I don't-
Should be-
I mean, we're supposed to stick to the resolutions.
Right, uh, okay, well, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to politic here, I do-
You just did. I did. I was waiting for you to say, I, you approved this decision.
Well, well, listen, at, at the end of the day, I'm telling you where I stand, because I, because if elected, because if elected, we'll have to work together, and I, I want you to know that I'm committed to working people, and I want the working people of New Brunswick to know that I'm committed to that, so, so thank you for doing this, and I think that the mayor and council can and should do more, and I hope that you continue to, uh, look out for the lowest-paid city workers and give them the raises they deserve. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yes. So, Keith Jones, can you?
Yeah.
On the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, ordinance, uh, my first thing is, uh, one, he shouldn't have been allowed to campaign at city council meeting, uh, the city of New Brunswick has been working on his ordinance for the crossing guards for some time, uh, the qualities of good leadership, uh, we understood and had foresight and knew that, uh, Mr. Cradaville would take credit, uh, for this particular ordinance being passed, uh, if it was political for us, we would have held this until after the election, but we did not, because it was the right thing to do, uh, these crossing guards deserved the raise, uh, we saw toward that it happened, uh, with the passing by city council, the word by the administration, Danielle Moore, who brought it to our attention, uh, there was a letter that went out today that did not mention Danielle Moore's name, uh, so, and that's exactly what was just read to you at a government meeting, a political speech, so, if the crossing guard should be thanking anybody, or if anybody should take credit for it, it should be Danielle Moore, the city council, the administration, the police department, uh, and of course, our mayor. What it does is, is it creates, uh, safer environment for our community, for our kids, uh, for our crossing guards, they get a little more extra cash in the pockets, and for their families, uh, and again, it's just the beginning, uh, we fully support raising the, the wages, but we know there's a process to doing all of that, so, I want to use my setup, because I know for a fact that he shouldn't be allowed to campaign at a government meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to add that, yeah, definitely Miss Danielle Moore was at one point, she said, you have to be credit for credit, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, we have three, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Titles 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-12, Traffic Control Regulation, Section 10-12, 160, Schedule 18, Right Turn on Red, prohibited, reference to Sanford Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this one?
That's once again Danielle Moore, 333 Summersett Street. I thank you for approving this, I did provide the pictures to the city council and to the traffic authorities stating, due to where I'm asking, no turn on red, due to where, if I'm crossing the street, crossing Sanford Street, going towards Red Shaw School, there's a car here, I have the right of way to cross, it says walk, but on the side, in the blind zone, I've seen too many close calls with the kids, where if you're short, how, I'm here at the car, and you cannot see as the next car is trying to make that right turn, so I just did want to make an announcement, I did show you the pictures on that, and I have to say thank you, uh, for doing it, which I hope to see the sign-ups soon as possible. Thank you very, very much.
Anybody else? Seeing none, move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, we have four, an order to supplement, uh, excuse me, an ordinance, and move to amend the management salary ordinance, 2018, 2020. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this one?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor, can I first ask, uh, what is the purpose of this ordinance, who is going to be, uh, receiving, uh, increases in their salary?
No one is receiving an increase in their salary, the, uh, ordinance establishes the ranges by which people can be compensated for years of 2018, 2019, 2020, if you are a management employee, it does not guarantee a raise, it just provides what range your salary must fall within, there's a minimum and there's a maximum established for each range.
Okay, and are the ranges increasing?
They are.
All of them?
I don't think so. Some are, some are not, some have been reduced in, uh, in, in magnitude, uh, the ordinance also goes to codify amending ordinances that we have done over the years, that have never been really added back to the mother ordinance, for lack of a better word, um, it captures some of the changes we made recently, creating a new department of engineering and public works, and creating a, a new director position there, um, but also then, also, um, by being increased slightly each, each year, it gives the mayor the opportunity to pass on rate increases to management employees, if he chooses to do so.
I see some of the titles are bolded, is this, now, what's the distinction?
That represents a change, or, so those represent an amendment to the, uh, prior ordinance, so people could read easily what, more easily the changes.
Thank you, I have just a couple of specific questions about positions, I see chairperson at the rent control board is a paid position, is it true there's somebody being paid to, uh, chair that to work presently?
I don't believe so. That's an existing title that has, um, not been carved out, I don't believe anyone has served in that capacity. Maria Cody is the rent control administrator, um, she's the paid person for that long-term assistant, the board members themselves are not compensated.
Okay, and that should, that would fall under rent regulation officer, is that the direct title, okay. And I do notice, uh, the mayor is listed here as, uh, Schedule 98, and if I'm reading this correctly, I see the minimum salary, 89,000, maximum 191,000, that is, uh, out of whack, compared to what I understand the mayor's salary to be, it's much higher than what it is, is that, uh, can you explain that, um, situation?
I can, the ranges assume full-time employment, as we know, the mayor's title is considered part-time, and as such, his compensation is $40,000, but, uh, and that is established by an additional ordinance, uh, which addresses the compensation for elected officials, but, um, 98 being the highest range that we recognize, and certainly he would be the, um, in many other circumstances, maybe the highest paid employee in the organization, he chooses not to be, um, and he has chosen not to amend the, uh, elected officials ordinance over time, but, uh, simply put, he's a part-time employee, and his compensation is, you know, represents that.
Thank you, so we have a part-time mayor here in New Brunswick?
I would say, uh, I see where you're going with it, the, the mayor works more hours than most of his, uh, executive staff combined, but should you, uh, want to consider him part-time, but, uh, in terms of compensation, part-time, um, you'd find him at his desk, uh, or around town, um, much more so than that. You'll take that call, just in case?
If I win, you bet.
$40,000.
You bet, you bet, and, and-
Hold on.
And, no, no, I, I'll be a full-time mayor, but I, I will work for that salary, and I will be a full-time mayor, with no side jobs, with no side businesses, and, and not have the conflicts of interest that are current and existing, um, so, I, I guess, uh, the, the last, uh, point I wanted to make is this, this allows for increases for three years, right, this ordinance thinks ahead, um, to-
Thinks ahead two years of-
Two, two additional years, yes, and, um- And, um, so, I guess my question is, compared to the prior ordinance that I spoke on, why doesn't the, the crossing guard ordinance account for, uh, raising their salaries over time, or their, their wages over time? Um, if we're doing that for the management employees, why not, um, you know, why not do that for the, the hourly workers?
Can, can easily be done in 2019 if, uh, that's what we choose to do as an organization. The, this ordinance was, uh, the school crossing guard ordinance was intended to get them caught up to, um, the kind of increases that other union, uh, employees received over that period of time where school crossing guard wages were flat.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. Anybody else? See enough, who do you want next?
Second. Council vice president Anderson?
Yes.
Council member Egan?
Yes.
Council member Escobar?
Yes.
Council member Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council president Fleming?
Yes. Now we have ordinance on first reading, uh, number one is pulled, and so we'll go to number two. An order to amend and supplement the revised ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Beables Traffic, Chapter 10-16 Stopping and Standing, uh, Parking, Section 10-16, uh, 20, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, uh, reference to Ball Street.
The ordinance is set down October 17, 6:30 PM, same date of the out of that.
Second. Council vice president Anderson?
Yes.
Council member Egan?
Yes.
Council member Escobar?
Yes.
Council member Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council president Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have resolutions one through 47. Yeah, one is being held, uh, 37. 37 is being held, we've got one through 43. Anybody from the public like to speak on the resolutions, your resolutions only, just reminding you, five minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville. Uh, I will start with number five, it's the corrective action plan. Can I just hear, uh, what, uh, if any items were identified in that 2017 audit?
The, uh, the auditors found that our baseball registration fees in the Division of Recreation were not supported by ordinance, um, and, um, we recognize that that is the case. Um, kind of surprises us because we had backed up the, uh, soccer and basketball fees by ordinance, but somehow, baseball fell through, uh, and we will do our best to, uh, address that before the end of the year. Um, in addition, there is, um, a finding that the water and sewer utility did not do a, an annual inventory of its materials and supplies. Um, corrective action will be that the department, the director of finance, and the outside of our auditors will meet with the water and sewer management personnel to develop a plan to, uh, create this inventory, uh, before the end of the year. And then, in addition, um, in two situations, um, employees received overtime compensation when the ordinances did not, um, appear to support that. Um, in, in one case, that matter has been resolved by the action you took earlier on the management ordinance, um, or man, management salary ordinance. We are allowing the fire official to be paid overtime when he has to come out and, um, investigate a scene. And then the second ord, uh, overtime issue dealt with a part-time employee in the library, um, and, uh, there's a little bit of a difference of opinion between the library board and, uh, the finance office on the matters, so we're seeking, uh, some, uh, input from our labor attorney. But those are the matters that made up the corrective, corrective action plan, um, and that is the action we're trying to take to clean up some of those items.
Thank you. Was there also a finding regarding the, uh, courts and the summonses that is often appearing in these reports?
It was not a, um, recommendation, it was not a subject to the, um, corrective action plan, but let me just double check. Doc, maybe you have the answer?
Yes, council president, that's actually included in a separate report that's provided to the municipal court. Any, any comments related to the court will be in that separate report, too.
Okay, and, uh, is there any indication of how many, uh, tickets were unaccounted for, or, or please break down this?
Not in this document, but I have not seen the court document yet.
I'll follow up. Uh, I did want to also ask you about, uh, two of those matters, the water and sewer annual inventory. Um, it sounds like a fairly basic thing that ought to have been done. Uh, tell me, are water meters part of that inventory?
Uh, I don't know the parameters of what the report needs to, um, uh, speak of fixed capital, I don't know if water meters would be treated as fixed capital, I don't know the answer to that.
Because, of course, we've had issues...
I don't think it's as easy, as easy a, um, exercise as you suggest to, to create this inventory of everything that exists in the way you're talking about. Nonetheless, I don't know the answer to that, maybe we can get it for you.
I, I wasn't, didn't mean to suggest it was easy, but I meant to suggest it was a fundamental or basic thing that ought to have been done. Um, can, can you please ask the acting water director, um, you know, how he plans to fulfill this, uh, corrective action, and whether or not water meters might be included in that inventory?
Is, is any, any need is related to the, the water indoor system that, that we, they have on hand at the end of the year? And there's no effect on the balance sheet itself because it's offset with a reserve, so if the inventory is a billion dollars, it's offset by a billion dollars. But, but it would include valve, it would include meters, it would include, uh, pipes, and that kind of makes you, okay?
And, and for the record, who's the gentleman who's, uh, speaking?
External order, Samuel Klein, accompany?
Okay. And are you Samuel Klein?
Samuel Klein, but not me.
No, he's a gentleman.
Joseph.
Joseph. Okay. No, Sam Klein.
Well, could, could the, uh, acting water director speak to county plans to address this corrective action that's needed?
Honestly, I, uh, was made aware of these findings yesterday, I have not had the time to develop a plan of, of action.
So the corrective action plan speaks to Mr. Wallace, meeting with Mr. Pettis, and the external auditors developing a plan for dedicating it in place.
Thank you. Uh, so I see, number, resolution number nine is, uh, seven different properties that the, I guess the city is moving to have the planning board consider making them redevelopment areas, just want to make sure my understanding is correct, this would be, um, you know, if the planning board agrees, that this would create seven different redevelopment areas?
No, be one redevelopment plan, scattered site, uh, redevelopment plan, I'd estimate to the seven properties.
Okay, so, uh, non-contiguous area of one plant?
Correct, they'll be identified in the plan.
Thank you. So, my only concern with that is, of course, the New Brunswick Housing Authority has, uh, serious problems, they would be the, then put in a position of power with regard to these sites, and I know that they have, for example, had a vacancy on their board for, since 2013, uh, where, uh, no one was serving as the state-appointed representative to this day, to my knowledge, and they also have, uh, you know, that one member who, uh, threatened me with physical violence.
I don't know on that.
That's my, my concerns are with the housing authority, that's all I'm trying to say. Uh, 23 is a bid for emergency housing shelter. Uh, can I understand what, uh, I, I understand that it has to be rebid, there's no one bid, but what exactly is it that the city is asking for bids related to?
It's an annual contract that the city does, uh, to provide emergency housing when, uh, someone needs to be relocated at, or a house that has been closed because it's uninhabitable, if they don't have a, a friend or a relative that they can, uh, move in with for a short period of time, we'll put them up in a, in a motel.
Right, right, so, I guess none of the local hotels and motels bid this time?
In fact, the standard practice has been, uh, they don't respond on the first round, we put it out again, and, uh, arrange the people to please respond, and we expect that's what will happen this time.
Okay. Thank you to Mr. Patterson. Next question I would like to ask Mr. Patterson, number 832, is, uh, noise ordinance for an environmental investigation at 96-100 Byard Street, just one block up from here, I'd like to understand if, uh, planning department has any knowledge of what, uh, exactly is the nature of the investigation, and how that may pertain to, uh, approved developments for that site. I understand it's like a 10-story building that's planned for that location.
If it doesn't involve art, of course.
Uh, council president, I can speak to that. There, uh, this is a follow-up, uh, there was an underground storage tank, was a home eating oil tank that was removed, I believe, in 1997 or 98. The environmental consultant had not done the follow-up, um, sampling, soil sampling, so this is a follow-up to try to close that permit.
Okay, so it's the same company that failed to do it, is now coming back in?
I couldn't tell you who did it originally, that was in 1997.
Gotcha. Uh, 834 is, I guess, a, uh, release of a performance bond related to, what I believe is to Quincy, and, uh, I would like to ask, uh, you know, um, what, you know, what is prompting the performance bond to be restored? Does this mean that the project is completed, um, and, uh, does the city consider this project a success?
Specific to the release of the bond, the bond is set forward to, to serve as a site performance guarantee, that all the work related to the right-of-way is going to be completed. All the work related to the right-of-way, and whatever was the function of that bond has been satisfactory, completed, inspected, and that's why the bond's being released.
Okay, and I understand that there was an ordinance created specifically because this project was, uh, um, for a prolonged period of time occupying the sidewalk and preventing, uh, pedestrians from using it. Uh, can you tell me, after all that, uh, you know, the ordinance was passed, was this developer fined for violating that ordinance?
They paid, uh, I believe, $100,000 in penalty or fee for having the sidewalk closed for a considerable period of time. I believe the ordinance predates the, uh, closure of the sidewalk, but nonetheless, your call, $100,000, they pay the city for satisfying that matter.
And, um, just a minor thing, I think there's a type of radical error in the resolution, the name of the town, um, that, uh, in which the developer's located, I think it should be Cranberry. 835, I'd like to know about the hazardous, hazardous materials cost recovery program, exactly what that means?
The main participation we do with the county, it kind of recognizes the county being the lead agency, uh, for investigating a hazardous material incident, and, um, empowers the, uh, the county to, um, um, collect, uh, or get, recover costs that they may have incurred, or municipalities may have incurred, uh, because of an incident, so this is just a, an annual renewal of that relationship.
Thank you. And then the last one I want to ask, that is the, um, authorization to advertise, uh, for a new fire pumper, C40, and just want to understand, is there a, you know, existing pumper that is nearing the end of its life? If so, which one?
There's several pumpers that are near the end of their life, uh, both, uh, the one that we intend to eliminate would be engine 12, which is about 15 years old.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes. Once again, Daniel Moore, uh, that's for 23, for emergency housing shelter. I was just wondering, is this included in, due to where I know the city did help out with the homeless last year, they did a great job in making sure they stay warm in certain places. Will this include keeping, help keeping the homeless warm?
No, this, uh, did not cover that, there are other programs that the city has for, uh, dealing with homeless populations, like it says, code L and so forth. This is for when, uh, a house gets closed down because, uh, it's unsafe for people to live in, so that those people aren't put out on the street if they don't have another place to go, you provide some emergency, uh, motel rooms for them until they can get, um, either a, a permanent place to relocate to, or a house that they may temporarily relocate to.
Does that include fire?
No, it does not.
Okay, and then, we to, uh, that's about Joyce Kilmer, the roadway being repaired. Uh, thank you for that, due to where that is also in the school zone, but also I still hope you was, uh, look forward into, uh, between Joyce Kilmer from Sanford and Handy, where that road is, it has been bad, and I'm just curious, that those, they pay taxes, why won't the city do any work in this area? I really believe in what, due to where that does not have proper curving, and it will cost too much, much more money to repair the roads?
Which group?
Due to where, I see your, your, like, like I said, you'll be doing from Joyce Kilmer to Handy, I see Joy, uh, Joyce Kilmer from Loretta to 12, not just asking, what, uh, will you be doing from Sanford to Handy soon also, due to where, what in the past 20 years or so, no work has ever been done in that area?
The, uh, resolution 42 is of your permission to allow us to apply for the grants for the 2019 program. Specific to the areas of different roadways, I, I seek input from other directors in the city. Um, there's also a little bit of a finesse when it comes to these grants, that you have to pick roads that are primary thoroughfares and also access a lot of public facilities. So when you make the application, it's good to hit these trigger boxes, so to speak. So in some cases, um, certain parts of roadways do not necessarily favor that they'll be granted in that, uh, situation. Uh, specific to Handy, I mean, at Joyce Kilmer, current, we're going to start the project, uh, from Handy to Patterson, that's under contract, the pre-construction meetings are already being held, and that's going to start shortly. This is a reapplication of Joyce Kilmer from, uh, Loretta to 12, because we felt this is the section that was done previously, I believe it was at, uh, from Sanford to Loretta, that approved the area for the new sports complex. We're trying to pick up the balance of Joyce Kilmer that serves the middle school memorial stadium and, and those facilities. Certainly, Joyce Kilmer between Sanford and Handy can use some attention, but that may have to come from a different funding source, because I don't think it's a primary, um, um, candidate that the state's, uh, the process would approve.
I don't see why you would say that's not, uh, why you couldn't get a grant from, for, for doing that role, due to where what? You have plenty of schools in that ar, area, and like I said, once again, with buses and all, that's a major role to be done. So I hope, like I said, they pay taxes in that area, where I hope you will look for in, forward to doing that role, too, also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Move the resolutions?
Second. Council vice president Anderson?
Yes.
Council member Egan?
Yes.
Council member Escobar?
Yes.
Council member Socora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council president Fleming?
Yes. Right, when we had, I had some discussion with council, anybody?
Yes.
Also, with councilwoman Escobar, I just want to, the council on the right.
Thank you.
I just have to excuse myself, I have to be somewhere now, but I just want to invite everybody, uh, next, uh, the October 14th, uh, Sunday, in Seagullia, so inviting all the residents to participate, and also because I go, I just want to clarify that the vacancy that Mr. Cradville is talking about with the New Brunswick housing authority has to be appointed by the, by the, uh, owner, so, uh, DCA, so it doesn't have anything to do with the city of New Brunswick, although having intent to fill that vacancy. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say, October, as we all know, is, uh, breast cancer, awareness month. Um, I encourage everybody, you know, a lot of times we think of it as just a blooming, uh, bleeding, but there's been, uh, influx of a lot of men who have been dying from it also, and it's encouraged everybody to get tested, I touched my family a few times, and earlier you get tested, the early detection, um, more chances of survival. And to those that have struggled with it, if you have family that's in struggle, we continue to wish them the best, and stay positive, and stick with the treatments, and do whatever you have to do, and keep fighting, so.
Mr. Council president, uh, members of council, I just wanted to update you on, um, a matter that I did research on from the last meeting, as you, as the council will recall, at our last meeting, you adopted on second reading, O-091802, which was an amendment to a schedule for altered side of the street parking for the street cleaning program, um, Hardenburg High Division Streets. And I think a member of the public asked a question about whether these were on the schedule, I... schedule, and I think Mr. Valeni stood up and said that they weren't on the schedule. Well, I sat and thought about that, and I've been sitting up here for a few years, and I know the city's processing procedure when it comes to putting up signs, because I know there's signs there, and I know Mr. Valeni's predecessor, predecessors in the departments in their particular practice. So we actually went back and took a look, and Mr. Valeni has spoken that those particular sections have been on the books for many years. In fact, as council may be aware, early on, we had a little red book, and traffic and parking was in a particular section called Chapter 12, and then it went to a blue book, like the one the deputy clerk has in front of her, and the schedules changed as well. And as years went on, we tried to get a little modernized with respect to what we called the schedules. And in fact, those particular designations with alternate side of street parking were in Schedule 25, Mr. Valeni was looking in Schedule 26 in our new book. So the actual, the ordinance that you passed moved them from 25 to 26, which I guess would be the appropriate schedule in moderate times. What you will see before you in the weeks coming, once I get a chance to do it, is I'll go back and I'll amend out those particular descriptions in Schedule 25, because now we have a duplication. So I just wanted to clarify that for the council and make sure everybody understood that there was an ordinance in place authorizing, excuse me, that alternate side of the street parking from way back when. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Now we have a public discussion. Anybody else to talk, please step forward, give your name and address to the record. We'll put you in your five minutes.
Maybe a more, once again, first, I would like to start off saying, keep up the good work, Charlie, Charlie, due to where, wow, I'm hearing your name mentioned around the city very good, due to where I'm hearing majority of the people of New Brunswick hasn't seen the mayor, doesn't even know the mayor, and I know you have been getting out around to people and the information you're able to find out about New Brunswick. I'm hearing good about you, so keep up the good work, what I'm hearing in the neighborhood going around, your name being mentioned. Okay, I also would like to thank the city for fixing the scoreboard up to the stadium for the last game. I do thank you for doing that. Then, one thing I have to say, I'm really upset, upset with, due to where the past two months, with the situation with Lee Avenue and Ward Street, with these speed bumps, the road was done back in July, out of the last two meetings at the traffic authority meeting, where it was mentioned, I'm really getting curious that, wow, excuse me, I'm not good remembering, Mr. Tom, due to where each time we said, oh, excuse me, and Mr. Mitch, due to where we said, okay, we're ready to do the speed bumps, each time you stood up, okay, no, we cannot do the roadwork, we're going to do the other side, then you canceled that, then, okay, we're going to do, where you said at the last meeting, okay, we're going to put them down. It's been two months since you did it, and my purpose of saying this, due to where you just had another major accident, I've been busy, I will provide the pictures to you that was on the 20th between four and five o'clock on the corner of Lee and Ward. You keep saying it's been approved, approved, like I said, each time at the traffic meeting, when will it be done?
Speed bumps are actually installed today. They were scheduled for the last two weeks, but we had conflicts with weather and other emergencies that took priority. Their speed bumps are installed as of today.
Oh, thank you. Okay, also getting back to crossing guards, due to where, how I will provide you with my evidence, due to where I know for sure you do not have enough crossing guards for the safety of Somerset and Lewis. If the crossing guard, that's a traffic light, if the crossing guard is on one side of the road with child, with a child, and you have a child on the opposite road, yes, you will need two crossing guards that there. And like I said, I will provide you the evidence, and also that is Sanford and Commercial Avenue, big way where one crossing guard, what I did, I did mention to the traffic authority. So like I said, please raise up again, because like I said, you still need more crossing guards, due to where, I have to say, majority of the crossing guards may be on disability.
Three, generally. Three per day. And are people applying for the job, or is it?
I think PD does some recruitment and is recommending hires to me on a regular basis, of which I, of course, I'm well familiar with.
And we said before that people are, we said young people are not applying because of the pay. I mean, ever since I remember, people always use it as a supplemental income because it's three, three hours a day, and they use it as a supplemental income and not as career. So I think.
But like I said, that's where.
I'm saying that, they use it as a supplemental income, that's why you usually see senior citizens, ever since I remember, even city citizens or people who were out of work, but you usually didn't hit young people applying for a job. And I know that we compensate people, I mean, I've seen, I know where I'm at, where I'm at, we don't even, where I'm at, my school district, they volunteer, some volunteer, some of them are compensated, and it's not even, it's not even close to what we compensate.
Oh, I know that, because like I said, I volunteered, why see, if crossing guard is not on the corner, yes, I will get out and help. Like I said, I will be, I would apply for the job also, but also, but like I said, what? One day I'm strong, next day what? I can be weak. I don't want to call out, and like I said, due to where, speaking of certain locations this week, like I said, due to where you had crossing guards out for the past couple of days, and a police officer did not come there to cross out children. And then, one thing, that's getting back to garbage, I know plenty of you laughed at me when I said with garbage, with the garbage truck, how it stinks. What I'm saying where it really stinks, when the gentleman hit the button and all that fluid comes out on the ground, where if you do that in front of a house, if it doesn't rain, how it will stink so bad in front of, every time, all that drips out the garbage, that's why I said I hope you will update, due to where, yes, these gentlemen, they're working hard, working hard, due to where you do not have enough workers for that either. Because like I said, I hope you can set up something with maybe community service for trying to clean New Brunswick up, due to where, what, finally, you got Jones Avenue, wow, he finally, believe me, not to mention any name, wow, he finally cleaned his house up. So I hope you can.
He did not.
Well, well, it's good to see, out of all that time, no matter how many tickets, it's good to see that it's been clean, clean. I know you do walk around, sometimes you walk around, and I say, give me some of your energy. And I know you do see the situation with the city garbage cans, all the garbage on each corner, due to where people come and just put their garbage and leave them in there, and that's also a situation due to where how bad it stinks. Do you, like I said, do you agree on that? You do what?
And also about the residents too, putting some of their garbage in those things that they shouldn't be doing.
And exactly where, that's a big situation, due to where I've been talking, I just called Ms. Donna, where she's in charge of this, saying that, okay, this will take time, with people, where I have pictures of taking to see people putting garbage on other people's property, no, I don't think this will take time. I said this should be done immediately, you start giving these people fine to keep our city clean.
You have intention to be happy, that's the problem.
Oh, I have intention, believe me, when I, when I speak upon something, you know good and well, I have pictures to prove my point in everything I speak, and like I said, I do have pictures of it.
Thank you.
So I hope you will.
Is it pictures of the person also, what I mean, that's the key?
Uh, like I said, I have pictures. Don't I prove my point? Every time I act or something, I give you the evidence to prove my point. Is that true?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor of New Brunswick. I'd like to ask about the issue of rent control and the legal requirements for the rent control board. Is it true that the rent control board is required to meet monthly?
It has a meeting schedule that they publish and post on the board down there, but if there's nothing to meet about, if there's no matter before the board, the volunteers aren't called out to have that meeting, and the meeting is canceled.
And it's true that they have not met since March of this year, is that correct?
I don't know the exact last date of the meeting, but if they, if the board has a matter before it, it meets. The board attempts to, or the staff attempts to mediate out any disputes first, because that works out faster and better for all the parties involved. Matters of dispute that can't be resolved that way, go in front of the board for them to try to resolve.
And I will say that the rent control office does do good work helping people who come to them, but I think perhaps a reason that there's so little business for the board to conduct is because a lot of people don't know about the rent control ordinance and what that means to them, both landlords and tenants, and I think the city could do more to educate folks and actually even host events where people can get their questions answered and learn about the city's protections that exist for renters. And I do want to share with you an article that I do have a concern about the present day rent control situation, I have copies. This article is from May 3rd, 2002, in the Newark Star and Ledger, it's titled, "Mayor Admits Illegally Raising Tenant's Rent."
What year is it?
2002.
2002, what year is it?
18. Correct, yes, that is the correct year. And he was the mayor back then. And this article begins, "A partnership made up of New Brunswick Mayor James K. Hill, his brother, and their cousin illegally raised rents on at least three apartments they own in the city," the mayor said yesterday. And it says here that, you know, 14 tenants were reimbursed over $3,000 for the improper increases. Later articles actually revealed that the mayor, you know, talked about reimbursing as much as $33,000 that he overcharged his tenants in those properties. And, you know, you can, you can do this on your own time, some of you may be familiar with this, but I'm going to draw your attention to page two, and there's a statement here that says, "K. Hill pledged yesterday to improve the city bureaucracy's ability to find such mistakes by landlords. He said he directed the rent control office to establish a database of city properties that would detect improper rent increases." And so, after seeing this article, I filed an Over request with the city clerk's office asking for the most recent copy of the database of city properties that is used to detect improper rent increases, to see if the mayor kept his word and to see how the city was enforcing its rent control laws, and to make sure that landlords weren't getting away with illegal rent increases. And I'll share with you the response to that Over request as well. And you'll see it's a one-sentence response. Dear Mr. Cradville, there is no document responsive to your request. So, what happened?
The rent control office uses a system called Spatial Data System along with a number of other departments in the city to track things. What Mr. Cradville was asking for in his Over request, I don't believe, was a document that the city has, and the city's attorney's office determined that there wasn't a document provided him under the, what he was specifically asking for under Over. But we have a database that registers what rents are charging. I think he was asking for something that was specifically showing where this rent was compared to what was allowed to be charged. We can determine that, but that is a complicated calculation that you have to go through that has a number of variables, so it's not something that can be printed out in a database. But if someone calls in and asks for a calculation of what the allowable rent is on a particular unit, that is information that we can give a tenant or a landlord to provide them with that information. But as to an overall report that is printed out, that is something we don't have. It's not something that is easily put into a report format to do that.
Okay. So, again, my request was for the database of city properties that is used to detect improper rent increases, and what we just heard is that there is a database, it's used to do this, it takes a little work, but that this database does exist, and so when they said there is no document responsive, that's kind of avoiding producing a record under the Open Public Records Act. Is this database a record? Is this record able to be produced or reproduced or shared? Because I believe it's a public record that ought to be shared with anyone who files an Over request for it, so that, just like the folks who caught the mayor illegally overcharging his tenants, that activists today who are concerned about tenants can check to make sure tenants aren't being illegally overcharged like the mayor did to his.
Activists are interested in that, and call the office and they can ask, I believe it's a $10 fee to ask for that calculation to be made. But what Mr. Cradville was asking for is an existing document that has that laid out, which is what Over requires to be shared. It's not an existing document. We can look up that information to, if someone has an inquiry about that, it is something that we've done. Mr. Cradville knows, he's, you know, made multiple requests for rent control information and other information from our office. If it's available, we supply it to him, and we supply it to him promptly. Some of the things he asked for aren't records that we have to provide them, therefore we can't provide.
If you could please ask the city attorney, is a database a record?
Over is very specific. With respect to the request, the specific request, I'll agree with Mr. Patterson, does not exist. There's no database of city properties that's used to detect improper rent increases that we should request, and that is what Mr. Patterson is explaining to you. There's no special.
Maybe less, but.
There's a computer program that figures that out and prints out the numbers, as Mr. Patterson said. You want a specific property, you want a calculation done, they can do that. Over is a very specific law. Mr. Cradville knows Over very well, probably as well as, you know, people who do this on a regular basis. And this particular request, as Mr. Patterson said, is something that we don't have. Obviously, if we had what you're specifically asking for, we'd get it.
Okay, well, thank you for the kind words. I do take that as a compliment. I will say that it was, you know, indicated that there is a database, I believe Spatial Data Systems. If a request were filed for a copy of that database, would that be complied with and produced?
There is a database, I would imagine, for Mr. Patterson, because I'm not familiar with all the operations that he's office, of every property that's registered under rent control.
What Mr. Cradville was asking for, would love to do a calculation essentially on the information that is in the database, and Over doesn't require us to go out and do new work to satisfy that. I believe Mr. Cradville has made requests of us in the past for all the registered units and so forth, and we provide them with that kind of information. If it's a report that's available, we provide it. But what he's asking is to go off and do something for his own information, for a report that isn't existing, that's not something that falls under Over.
So just to be clear, the existing database, the one that was referred to earlier, were an Over request filed for that? Would that be produced, would a copy of that be produced?
It's an electronic database. It's like a database system, and so it doesn't exist in a report, it is not something like an Excel spreadsheet, which we regularly provide to Mr. Cradville on a number of subjects that can just be easily printed out or put in a spreadsheet-type format. It's a more sophisticated-type database. So if Mr. Cradville's asking for a list of all the units that are registered in the city, here you go, we can, you know, spit them out a report on that, and we usually send it to him electronically, so it doesn't even get charged for. But for the specific request he was making, that's not, you know, a report that we have and that we can't put together without having to go do something new that we don't normally do, and that's not hopeable.
Well, I think that the difference between a report and a database, and I would just like to, you know, say that, you know, is there a way that this database can be put on, say, a flash drive? Because if so, it should be Overable, and I should be able to get a copy, but I'd be happy to pay the cost of the flash drive.
Unless he has the proprietary software. Unless he has the proprietary software, it's going to be meaningless.
Okay, well, that's a choice that I can make, to get that software if I want, and it might be cheaper than, I believe we have 10,000 rental properties in the city, or maybe 8,000 rental properties in the city, times 10 bucks each to get the report he talked about. It's probably cheaper than $80,000 for me to buy the software and get the flash drive and be able to do this to check to make sure landlords aren't ripping off tenants. Can, can, is that possible? Can I get the database? In response to an Over request?
I think Mr. Cradville should, you make a request, make a new request under Over, and he'll deal it in the normal course as we do, and get back to you.
I will, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Push to adjourn.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Soccora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.